One second, I'm trying. What page were you referring to?
I'm actually trying to find it myself. I do apologize. Usually I like to have these in front. Oh, here it is. One ninety-seven. It says Appendix HPPMI Clinical Protocol.
I'm gonna show the witness.
Yes.
Maybe I can see this is, excuse me, maybe I can speak to the PPMI protocol. So just to be, again, just again, to take a step back, of course, for every, and this is really referring to the PPMI study as, as Ms. Evans described, it'd be different for, it may be slightly different for other, other studies. But for this study, you know, the, a protocol is created. This is the PPMI protocol. It directs the sites, how to acquire data. It is associated with a, and a informed consent document, which also is, is what the participant will sign, which describes to them all of the activities in the study, as well as where the data, who might have access to the data. And so that is, you know, is, is, makes them aware of this at the start of their participation. And so this also will be a guide to the, again, to how to acquire all of the information. There are other documents in addition to the protocol that, you know, are called, you know, operational documents or in which, you know, in, in individuals will, you know, which they, there are instructions about more detailed, now that including safety issues and so forth. But, you know, the, the, the safety, the key safety issues are described in the, in the protocol, yes.
In hearing officer Novi, just to clarify on the late file, so just what, just want to be clear, so we're all on the same page. That, that protocol that you just, that you just mentioned in Appendix H. So every study has its own protocol, like the guidelines and rules that we are going to follow for a particular study. That's what Appendix H is. As for late file two, I just want to make sure as, and we have them in abundance. We have all, we are HIPAA compliant, security, privacy.
Yeah, I just want to, sorry. So, um, we're not a covered entity under HIPAA. And we've, we have the documentation that, that we've stated that, but that we do all of the things that we can possibly do to, to, to ensure the privacy and security as if we are a HIPAA covered entity. I would like to see that.
Yeah, and we have those policies and procedures. And if that's what you're looking for, we are happy to provide.
That is exactly what I am looking for. Um, yes.
We will, we will submit those as late file number two. Sorry for the interruption.
No, no, it's fine. I actually have a, you kind of answered one of my questions with that answer. But so every study will have separate protocol and they might vary slightly from Appendix H. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Are there any plans to expand beyond medical research?
No.
Are there any plans to expand into treatment?
No.
Would you be willing to put on record that if you open for medical services, you will need to come back in for a new CON?
Yes, of course.
Okay. We're gonna shift modes again. We're gonna go back to financing. On page twenty of Exhibit C, you stated that there will be several rounds of funding, including round one in June of twenty twenty-four and round two in June of twenty twenty, I'm sorry, in July of twenty twenty-four. Were these rounds completed?
Yes, they have been.
Can you provide new financials reflecting the new, the two new rounds of funding as late file three?
Yes, we can.
And then as a follow-up to that, was adequate funding acquired to, or sorry, was this, was sufficient capital raised in these rounds to fund the equipment that you are looking to acquire?
Yes, we have raised more than fifty million dollars.
Was sufficient capital raised to cover the capital investments, including the building and other fixed costs?
Yes.
Was enough, was enough capital, was sufficient capital raised to cover your operating expenses until, until you start receiving funds from the studies?
Yes, no problem, yeah.
All right. That is it for my questions for the, I'm just gonna ask a quick question to my group. Otherwise, I am done with the applicant.
You asked a question here, Officer Novi?
Uh, no, I'm just, um, I'm just asking, I, I'm just asking my group to see if there's anything else that they would.
Sorry, yeah. Take, take your time. I just, for some reason, I thought you asked us a question.
No, all right. So I don't have any additional questions for you guys at this time. I'm going to, thank you. I mean, you guys can go ahead and remute yourself. I do have some questions for the intervenor. Very few, but just a few. And so on, in Exhibit O, page seven, the intervenor states, "And VCR is currently meeting the imaging requirements of the PPMI study and has substantial compat, substantial additional scanning capacity to support additional studies." What statistics do you have to support this statement?
Denise, do you want to address that?
Yeah, sure. I'm just pulling the data that we have. Hang on one second. So, um, let's see. Yeah, so in recent years, so if I go back to twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, we've done on average between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and twenty scans each year. So that's approximately four hundred and eighty a year total. Spec data, again, roughly four eighty in the years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So we believe that since, and in twenty twenty-four, we did a much higher rate of those scans. And we know that that, we are not at capacity yet. So, hang on a second. So if we push capacity, I don't have the data in front of me, and so maybe we can submit this in addition around how many scans per week, but we estimate that we can about double what we're doing on a daily basis.
Okay. How do you determine that there is no additional need for research scanners?
Can I ask a clarifying question? So, I mean, I don't think, I don't think we said there's no additional need for research scanners anywhere, you know, in the world. I think we're saying there's, there's no need for research scanners two blocks away, right?
In New Haven, I mean, they did, you did say that you should be, you have the ability to support additional studies and pretty much stated that there were other ones. So how do you determine that there are no additional scanners needed for research in New Haven?
Yeah, so, oh, sorry, Ed. Yeah, maybe I'll just comment just quickly, you know, based on the numbers that I just gave and what we know, we can do internally. We can at least double the current rate of scanning. So that's what we're basing that on.
So you haven't based that off of any of the other research scanners in the area, such as the one at Yale?
No.
Okay. Have you talked to any of the other researchers that are, have similar scanners in the area about their abilities?
I'm not aware that we have.
Thank you. That's it for my questions. All right. Let me take a second.
Would that not note that there's excess capacity already, even, even more so?
I, I'm sorry, who's, who's speaking?
Sorry. Ben Murphy, Ben Murphy here, but.
Who, who are you? I'm sorry.
I'm the CFO of Invigro. Good to meet you.
You're not allowed to talk right now. I do appreciate your interest, but these are my questions to, but.
I guess we'd ask the right to, to follow up on, on the question that you, that you asked about the scanners? And if we could swear in the witness?
Yeah, we can swear him in, and he can answer to that. But I, I just, we normally discourage people from just, you know, unless they've been, you know.
My apologies for not being the, the gatekeeper on that. But if we could have Ben sworn in and, and, and then he could speak to the, the questions you just asked about. The scanners and scanner capacity, we're happy to elaborate on those points.
Mr. Murphy, if you could state your name and your title for the record.
Sure, Benjamin Murphy, I'm the CFO of Invigro.
Okay, and can you spell your last name for the reporter?
M U R P H Y.
All right. Raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you are about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
All right, thank you. Go ahead and put your hand down. All right, same question to you. Do you have statistics to support your statement that there is, that you can handle all of the scanning requirements in New Haven?
Yeah, so, so I think, you know, like Denise mentioned, we obviously track our output currently, right? And we do our own capacity planning internally. And so we know that we're, you know, currently doing around one twenty, then three hundred scans in aggregate for the HR plus, PET CT, spec CT, all of those, which are actually the, the exact pieces of machinery that we're discussing today. And so what we know is that in our own facilities, we've got the ability to double our capacity. And so the question really, as far as unmet needs, would be, well, when is our capacity reached, right? And so if we look at the, the growth rates of Alzheimer's studies, things like that, it's generally around ten percent a year. And so for the foreseeable future, we can meet the needs of New Haven because we're already meeting the needs right now, let alone our, our excess capacity that we can take on future needs. And so if we're then talking about Yale and others, then wouldn't that note that we would have, there's already an existing even more capacity? So why would that further justify any additional machines?
Well, is it your, your statement then that until you're at capacity, we shouldn't let anybody else in?
I don't see why there would be an unmet need. So we have, we have the capacity.
Until you, when would you say you'd be at capacity? Like, when would we, under your thought theory, when would we be allowed to in, have other people enter the, the area?
When there's an unmet need, right? I mean, all the parts, other parts of the state of Connecticut need these services as well. It's more the proximity that, that we're talking about as far as a, an unmet need here.
So if they went to East Haven, they'd be okay?
If, if, they would have to look at what, what capacity needs there are there, right? All, all saying is we've looked at our capacity needs in the New Haven area, and we know what that is.
Okay. All right, I think, I think we're done with that one. And so let me just go back to my instructions. All right. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and go over what we have asked for late files. Attorney Karenante, do you have an idea? Oh, I have, I'm sorry, I have a hand raised by, sorry, I, they don't stay up, they go across my screen and people keep moving on the top line. And I'm going to really say your name wrong. Dr. Charles Magnussen?
Yeah, it's okay. No, no worries, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I want to, if you allow me, to make a small comment here on, on the predecessor person.
Oh, wait a minute, I don't know this, the procedure that is supposed to be designed to allow, like.
I thought there might be a request for some sort. Okay, we're not gonna have you, you make a statement if you, if you want.
It's okay. I'm, I'm, my apologies here.
Okay, so Attorney Karenante, um, we are going to have, it looks like three late files. What would, would you need for a timeline for submission of those?
Can you give me one minute?
Yeah, take your time.
Hearing Officer Novi is, is within a deadline of two weeks, okay with you?
Yes, it's what I can give you, as long as you need to make sure you get them in. As I've told you pre, in previous hearings, if you need more time to submit them, if you are running up to the deadline and find that you cannot submit in time, please ask for more time, and that will be granted to you to get them in.
That's much appreciated. We will endeavor to do it by the two-week deadline.
So let's say for late files, those will be, actually, I'm gonna give you a little more time because that late file week is the, is the holiday week. So why don't we have them due by September ninth?
Okay.
That's a Monday.
Yeah.
Four thirty PM on, on September ninth. That way you're, you've got a little bit of time after the holiday to get those back into us. If you need more time, please reach out to the, please reach out to Mr. Lazarus and let him know that you are, or file a request to extend the late file deadline in the portal.
I'm sorry, and as you know, I'd like to just repeat them, just so we're all.
Yeah, I'm gonna go over them right now.
Oh, perfect.
So I'm gonna go over the late files. Late file one is, uh, the information on the PET imaging scanner that we requested, the studies.
Just so we're clear, I, you'd like any information in, including peer review literature with respect to the Neuro Explorer and how those scans are, the quality of those scans compared to other PET scanners, is that?
Yes, that is exactly. I apologize. I am trying to read my own very bad handwriting right now.
Problem. So that's late file number one.
Late file number one. Late file number two is the data security protocols that, that we went through, the ones that state that although you are not a business entity, that you do try and protect the data in a, in as compliant a way as possible.
Correct, we, yeah, yeah.
Late file three was the update on your funding situation after your last two rounds of funding. So, or updated financial sheet.
So an updated financial worksheet A, is that what you're requesting?
A worksheet A, and if you could give us what the results of those funding rounds were.
Okay, results of funding rounds and updated financial worksheet A, okay.
All right. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to issue an order for those late file items and those that are to be produced by the applicant. And I will hopefully get that, I usually get that out by the end of the week, but this was heard, heard on Thursday, so I will, I'm looking at getting that out by the, the August twenty-seventh. So I will have that uploaded to the portal and sent to the applicant as soon as possible. All right. And then we will have those, and on the order, it will state that the, that the, we, the late files are expected to be produced by the close of business on September ninth, Monday, September ninth. This point, we will move on to closing arguments and statements from the intervenor's attorney, then closing arguments and statement from the applicant's attorney. And with that, Attorney Fishman.
Yeah, could I ask to take a five or ten minutes break off the record, just so we can kind of regroup? And then we'll move right into the closing statement?
Um, you know, I have some staff that are running up against deadlines and another meeting that they do have it at two thirty. Let me just make sure that, that those.
They'll take five minutes.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take, we'll take a ten-minute break. That's fine. I think we can, we can, the one person who needs the hard leave can leave. All right, we'll see you back here at two-ten, everybody. Please mute and stop your video if possible. All right, it is two-ten PM. As you are just notified, we are recording this hearing. If you do not consent to being on camera, you can revoke your consent right now by leaving, by exiting the hearing. All right. I think we, oh, there we go. I was gonna say, I think we might be having a technical issue with Attorney Fishman, but he is back and on screen again. All right. So good afternoon, everybody. It's two-ten, it's now two-eleven PM. This is the CON hearing for Zing Imaging LLC, document number twenty-four dash three-two-seven-one-four dash CON. At this point, we are at the closing statements, and we will begin with, with the closing statement from the intervenor's attorney. Go ahead, Mr. Fishman.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Novi, and thank you to the Office of Health Strategy staff for the opportunity to present Invicro's position today. For the numerous, numerous reasons we've outlined, Invicro believes that Jing has not met its evidentiary burden of establishing that its application meets six of the statutory principles and guidelines that OHS must consider in its determination. Before I summarize, summarize each of those six factors, I want to reiterate our position on the record that we believe Jing's proposed facility in New Haven, where these scanners would be operated, would qualify as a healthcare facility under Section nineteen A, six-thirty subsection ten. I know we've had discussion about that issue. That subsection defines a healthcare facility to include any other facility requiring a certificate of need pursuant to nineteen A, six-thirty-eight A. Since Jing requires a certificate of need for the proposed purchase of these scanners, and since it will be operating those scanners at a facility, we believe by definition, Jing qualifies as a healthcare facility under the statute. We're happy to submit a post-hearing brief on this point. The reason why this is very important is because it essentially would trigger application of several of the statutory factors and, and require OHS to consider those statutory factors that refer specifically to a healthcare facility. We believe OHS is required to do that in this case. We also preserve any and all appellate rights on this issue because it's really a legal question, not a factual question. The legal question of whether Jing qualifies as a healthcare facility in connection with this application. Let me turn now to the three statutory factors that are not dependent on whether Jing qualifies as a healthcare facility. We believe Jing has failed to meet its evidentiary burden with respect to those three statutory factors, and for that reason, its application should be denied. First, Jing has failed to show that there is any clear public need for the proposed purchase of these three scanners that we've been talking about today. You've heard testimony from Invicro that is currently performing this imaging work. It has the capacity to double the amount of imaging work it's performing. It's performing this work in New Haven on the PPMI and other studies involving the same research population, research subject population that Jing is targeting in its proposal. The, the, Jing's obligation to show clear public need is stated in Chapter Five of the statewide plan. And again, I'll quote Chapter Five, right in the beginning of Chapter Five, on page one-thirty-four. It states, "Entities seeking authorization to acquire imaging equipment are required to demonstrate that they meet clear public need." Invicro respectfully submits that there is no clear public need for the proposed purchase of the imaging equipment because Invicro is using similar equipments to provide the same types of services today. We also heard a lot of testimony from Jing, Jing representatives about the different areas of research that they'd like to be engaging in if they get their CON application approved. I do want to point out that Jing itself, that Invicro, excuse me, Invicro itself is also involved in that same, those same research areas. And in fact, all the incredible research that the Jing witnesses talked about that has been done so far, that's all been supported by Invicro. So we don't think there, there is clear public need for the proposed purchase of scanners. We don't believe Jing has met its evidentiary burden to prove that. It's the first reason why its application should be denied. Second reason why its application should be denied is that Jing hasn't met its evidentiary burden of demonstrating that the proposed purchase of the three scanners would be financially feasible. You've heard about this Neuro Explorer, where it costs roughly three million dollars. There's no evidence that Jing is in a position to purchase the Neuro Scanner, the Neuro Explorer. We've heard vague references to investment funds by its parent company, but until Jing provides specific evidence showing it has those funds and is in a position to purchase these scanners, we don't believe they've met their evidentiary burden. We also haven't seen any evidence of contracts associated with the purchase of those scanners. I think it's very important to realize that if Jing's CON application is granted, it's not obligated to buy the Neuro Explorer, that everyone's talking about as state-of-the-art equipment. Could always decide to buy the other two scanners, which are refurbished scanners, essentially would have the same capabilities that Invicro has today. So we don't think Jing has made its case on the financial feasibility of its proposal. Third, we don't think that Jing has demonstrated how its proposed purchase of the scanners relates to the statewide healthcare plan. We pointed out the deficiencies in Jing's application on that point in our presentation. So those are three statutory factors that don't turn on whether Jing would be considered a healthcare facility under the statute. I'll reiterate again, our position is Jing should be considered a healthcare facility for the purposes of looking at the principles and guidelines set forth in Section three, six-thirty-nine A. And we believe based on that, that there are three additional factors that Jing has not met with its application and the evidence is provided today. First, Jing has failed to demonstrate that its proposed facility would not result in unnecessary duplication with Invicro's existing facility. As I said at the outset, I couldn't think of a, of a, of a more compelling case of unnecessary duplication. Their whole intent and purpose is to come in and replace Invicro in the same geographic location, providing the same types of services. Second, we don't believe Jing has demonstrated that the research subject population is seeking to serve has any need for the proposed facility. Those research subjects have been visiting the Invicro clinic for years. They're familiar with the Invicro staff. Invicro is in a position to continue to support and in fact expand the imaging services it's provided. And Jing hasn't shown any need among the research public, such, subject population for the, for the new equipment and its new facility that it's proposing. And finally, we don't think Jing has demonstrated its proposed facility would improve quality, accessibility, and cost effectiveness of healthcare delivery in the, in the region. In fact, you've heard testimony today that any transition of this imaging work from Invicro to Jing would be extremely disruptive. Although Dr. Merrick attempted to portray it as a fairly simple process, it is very clear. There's a whole regulatory side to this with an IRB. Jing has not advanced that side of things, other than its testimony that has a relationship with someone at the IRB. But there's a whole regulatory process that would need to be filed. There's a principal investigator that Jing would need. There was a vague reference to having someone on staff who could act in that capacity, but no one specifically was identified. It's not clear that person is a physician. So we just don't think Jing is set up to actually support what they're proposing to do. And this would be incredibly disruptive for the research subjects. You haven't heard any testimony from Jing about how this benefits the research subjects, how disruptive this would be. And then we heard a lot about data. We have made the argument, and we continue to believe that the Office of Health Strategy must consider the national security risks associated with Jing's proposal, given it's owned by Chinese companies. You heard about the, the data issues. Jing has direct access to identifiable research subject data. Various people within Jing, including its IT department, will have access. We don't know where that IT department is. Is it using an ID department in China? Is it using Chinese technology? There are all kinds of restrictions on the ability to share both equipment, data, technology between the US and China. We're very concerned about that. We think that's a. Um, we're very concerned about that, we think that's a, a very important issue that the Office of Health Strategy needs to look at. We also had stated in our opening statement and in our papers that we've submitted, including our position intervened, that there's very little clarity about who actually owns Xing. Um, there's some inconsistent references to a company called Mitro. Um, there are inconsistent references to who actually employs various people that uh, represented themselves as being part of Xing today. And we reiterate our request that the Office of Health Strategy should require Xing to provide more information to clear up these ambiguities about its corporate ownership structure. Finally, I'd like to address two of the points that were made by Xing's counsel or by Dr. Merrick when they attempted to frame the narrative of this proceeding. First, Xing's counsel at the outset in his opening statement attempted to paint Invicro's objection as being entirely driven by financial interests. I'd like to clarify the record on that point. First and foremost, Invicro's objection is based on its good faith belief that Xing has not met the statutory principles and guidelines to obtain a certificate of need. We have made the point repeatedly today, and also in our written submissions and through our testimony, that we don't believe Xing has met its evidentiary burden, and the Office of Health Strategy has the obligation to make that determination as to whether Xing has met its evidentiary burden in order to obtain certificate of need. Secondly, we're not gonna deny that Invicro is protecting its business interests, of course we're protecting our business interests. You've heard today from Invicro employees, um, who are very vested in the work that they've done, very proud of the high quality imaging they've worked that they've done, and who have every intention of continuing to do that. We have every right to participate in this proceeding under the statutory scheme to defend our business interests. However, it's very unfair, we believe, and we respectfully, uh, state, it's very unfair to suggest that Xing's proposal is also not driven by financial interests and the interests of Dr. Merrick. We've heard a lot of testimony today that suggests Xing is some kind of charitable entity, but I want to make it very clear on the record, Xing is a for-profit business, um, Dr. Merrick referred to the fact that he believes Xing gave him a gift, well, the gift that he's referring to, we believe, is the direct and indirect financial benefits that he will retain and obtain as an owner, as a consultant if this work is transferred from Invicro over to Xing. In fact, we wouldn't even be here today if those financial interests weren't driving this attempt by I N D and Xing to transfer the work from Invicro to Xing. Secondly, Dr. Merrick referred in his testimony to the benefits of more competition. This is not a case about more competition. This is a situation where Dr. Merrick, I N D and Xing are seeking to replace Invicro with Xing. And although they've tried to present and paint their proposal as being in the interest of the research studies and the research subjects, as I pointed out, we believe that the main motivations here are financial and that they're downplaying the impacts and the disruptive and divisive impacts that their proposal would have on the ongoing clinical studies, which have been supported by Invicro at a high quality level for many years, they'll be disruptive to the routines of the research subjects. And there are significant data security concerns that we have about this whole proposal. For all of those reasons, to sum it up, our position is Xing has failed to show there's a clear public need for its proposed purchase of these scanners. We appreciate the opportunity to present our position to you today. We appreciate the assistance, uh, and the professionalism of you and your staff, Hearing Officer, uh, Novi. And we'd be, um, happy to, um, as I said, um, submit a, a post-hearing brief on the legal issue that, that we believe is very critical to this proceeding. Thank you.
All right, uh, we will go to closing statements from the applicant's attorney, uh, Attorney Karenante.
Thank you, uh, Hearing Officer Novi, and OHS staff for, for your time today, um. As you've heard from Xing's, Xing Imaging's witnesses today, we have the space, uh, the personnel and the financial resources to carry out this proposal. All we are waiting for is OHS's approval to purchase the three cameras. And as far as the speculative nature of the Neuro Explorer, we don't have the money, we literally have over fifty million dollars dedicated for this project. And if OHS would like it to make it a condition of approval that we purchase these three specific cameras, including the Neuro Explorer, meaning all or nothing, we are very happy and willing to do that in writing, that as soon as we get this approval, we will buy all three scanners that we mentioned in our application, including the Neuro Explorer. So I just want to put that to bed, uh, and this nonsense away. Finally, um, we want to reiterate that we are researchers, we are not a healthcare facility as the intervenor tries to allege over and over. We filed our application from the beginning under Connecticut General Statute nineteen A six thirty eight subsection ten um, for the acquisition of imaging equipment. And as you can clearly see in that section, it says any person, any physician, et cetera, et cetera. If you want to acquire a piece of imaging equipment, you need to get a CON. If you would take the intervenor's argument, uh, the, a, a physician, literally an individual doctor who buys a a, a piece of imaging equipment, the intervenor today would say, you individual physician are a healthcare facility. That is absolutely nonsense and contradictory to Connecticut law. Um, as such, as such, because we are not a healthcare facility, many of the criteria applicable to healthcare facilities are not applicable to Xing. And one final point on the criteria, the CON law states that OHS has to make a finding on each criteria, not that you have to satisfy or meet each cri- each criteria. Again, Invicro is defining or conflating the public need for this proposal as their own need and their own capacity and not the needs of the public. The public includes all citizens of Connecticut who need quality research and the possibility to eradicate these devastating diseases. And another thing that is being conflated or confused that I have to remark upon is this, this thing about New Haven and being a few blocks away. This is not, we are not a healthcare facility, this is not a primary service area where two healthcare facilities are trying to get patients within the New Haven primary service area. We are a research facility, a worldwide researcher. Our research participants, as stated in the application, over sixty percent of them come from all over the world. It doesn't matter if we're located in New Haven, East Haven, West Hartford, Massachusetts, Africa. The research is the research, we are not competing for the New Haven research market. We are, we want research participants from anywhere and everywhere, we do not care, it's irrelevant where Invicro is located, it is irrelevant to us. The only reason we picked New Haven is that that's where our people live and work around, it is irrelevant where Invicro is. And, and as far as these, these notions of no one else can do research until our machines are, are at capacity, is ludicrous. And by the way, I just want to mention the person who made that statement is the CFO, the Chief Financial Officer of this company. Not a scientist, in fact, they hadn't, Invicro had no scientists, no doctors here today, because they are not interested in research or advancing the progress against these awful diseases. It was the CFO who said, please, no one else do research until our, our machines are full. It, it, I, I just want to be clear that there is no ceiling to research, there are no physical boundaries to research, we do not care about the New Haven primary service area. Our research is independent of their research, they can go and do all the research that they want to. Even if I N D didn't exist, even if PPMI or the Michael J. Fox Foundation didn't exist, we would still be applying for this CON today. We, that is just one contract that I N D is bringing to us. We have many other contracts that we want to obtain, we have many other studies that we want to do. Regardless of what the I N D study is, so the fact that there isn't capacity, that there isn't need out there, again, i- i- is ludicrous in my opinion. But I, I, again, uh, and they're just grasping at straws today with respect to we are a healthcare facility, we, we clearly are not. Then we have this red herring about Chi- you know, Chinese involvement. I just, as a side note, Invicro itself has Chinese locations, their owner, Calix, has Chinese locations. In fact, if you go to their attorney's website, Hogan and Levels website, they have three offices in China. So this is just, uh, if, this is just a red hammer. Okay, the only thing we are competing against are Alzheimer's disease, Parkinson's disease and cancer. We are not competing against Invicro or any researchers for that matter. Uh, it appears to us, just us, in our opinion or my opinion, Invicro is simply trying to stifle competition, preserve their own financial interests that they themselves are not interested in advancing research. We truly believe that the more resources, people and companies, including Invicro, dedicated to such research, the better, and that research itself is at its best when there's competition. Any attempts to delay or prevent such activities and research progress, in my opinion, in my opinion, are unconscionable, directly contrary to the purpose and spirit of research. And last, last but not least, harmful to the needs of the public who today and who in the future be impacted by these awful and devastating diseases. Thank you for your time.
All right, everybody, I would like to thank everyone for being here today and for attending this hearing, um. This hearing is going to be adjourned at two thirty one, um, but the record will remain open until it is closed by OHS after the, um, the late filing of the exhibits. Thank you, everybody, for your time today, I really appreciate it. Have a nice day, we'll see you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.